Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the February the first legislative session. Work session of the Salisbury City Council. We have several items on the agenda tonight, and we're going to start with a brief update of the Chesapeake Natural Gas Project, and Amanda Pollak is going to give us an update. Thank you, Amanda.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. So we've asked Chesapeake Utilities to provide us with a monthly update, and I'll share their memo at the first work session of every month. And this is the format that we're proposing. Work that they've completed in the past month, work that they will be doing in the next month, work that they're performing in Salisbury, and an update on their anticipated completion dates. So we've asked Chesapeake to schedule to come back before you with their personnel in six months. But in the meantime, we'll do this monthly update, and if you have any questions you would like for me to relay back to them, I'd be happy to do so. And I will add on the last item of coordination with Rail Trail, we have our next meeting scheduled with them next Tuesday. So we will be meeting with their staff again in a week.
Great, great, thank you. Questions from the council? Ms. Blake?
None.
This is Gregory?
None.
And I have none either. This is a good, this is a good format, and I think, I think it'll work for us. As long as we keep the Rail Trail meetings going as a priority, obviously, because that impacts, could potentially impact our plans, so thank you, Amanda, for that. Next, we have a new ordinance, and Business Development Director Laura Soper will take us through that. Good afternoon, Laura.
Good afternoon, council. This afternoon, we're looking at a grant acceptance of a little over $130,000 from the Maryland Strong Economic Relief Initiative, also known as Maryland SERI. It's to assist businesses in our Main Street District with recovery efforts due to hardships caused by COVID. So we applied for those funds, we were awarded them, and we are looking to accept them, and we'll open a grant application to businesses in our Main Street District, hopefully, starting February 15.
Great. Questions from the council members? Ms. Blake?
None.
Thank you. This is Gregory?
Um, yeah, my only question is what, what area is this going to cover? Like, what is it, all the businesses? I wasn't sure what that entails.
Yeah, so our Main Street District is, it's mostly our downtown area, it's a designated area, but it does extend a little out off of Route 50 to the, like, shopping center where Save-A-Lot is a little bit down Riverside, on the riverside of it. I can include a map when it comes back to council next week.
Yeah, that'd be great, thank you. Yeah, because I'm just not familiar where the lines are, and I know somebody's going to ask, so.
Yeah, I'll happily provide that.
Okay, great, awesome, thank you.
I have a question, Laura. As I read this, this is open to all businesses, not just restaurants, correct?
This is open to all businesses. Though, there's a few businesses that wouldn't qualify under the program. One that was discluded was churches. I left out home-based businesses in there, because they need to have a brick and mortar is what I think is most important to help in that area. Banks and financial institutions were ineligible, and I think I said investment real estate entities unless they were applying for improvements that were somehow COVID-related for a property or business in the Main Street area, so. Other than that, I wanted to make it really flexible.
Sounds good. What's the target date to get these funds into the hands of the people? How long should it take?
Um, so it comes back next week for work session, and then it comes to February 2nd. I'm planning on opening it in two phases. The first phase of applications is what I'm calling the dire need, the ones, the businesses that can demonstrate that they are really struggling, they're, you know, behind on bills, they desperately need these funds. That first round, I want to open February 15th, so I can start vetting those applications and get funds out the week after. And then there would be a second round that would open February 2nd, so. Those are the, what I call the tier-two businesses that are using funds to help recover from COVID in other ways, so.
It's February 22nd, not the 2nd, right?
Oh, sorry, yes, 22nd.
Okay, good, well, that's good, you know, a week to get the funds in the hands of people, that's pretty good, so.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Thank you for that, congratulations, I'm sure you've got a, you're going to have a list that you're going to be getting, so. Good luck with that.
To help go through applications, I'm taking resumes for people who want to help review them.
Well, I may do that.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a discussion about the CIP for next year. I think I saw Mr. Cordery on there, are we not? Do I see him? Keith, are you with us?
Yes, good afternoon, everyone. So I'm going to share my screen, if that's okay, and I can start out with just a quick snapshot of the debt services in this CIP. That'll be my role, get us started.
Julia, do you want to start off with a little overview, maybe?
Uh, sure, good evening, council. Before you is the FY '22 to '26 Capital Improvement Plan. It is our guiding document, you know, moves every five years to help us plan and think about future needs. And, and it is, I think, the needs are as realistic as, as as possible. The funding that is associated with it necessarily isn't. You know, we, unfortunately, we won't be able to fill all these needs, so that will be a conversation at a later date with you all. But, you know, our, every department, you know, this is, there's always more than what's even here, so. It is a realistic picture, and we're going to, to be, we're going to be as creative as possible to try to get as much in during the next budget cycle, which is underway now. So as you can see on, if you've reviewed on page 10, you know, are the overviews, the overall funding for each year. And I would just share that we've tried to keep it as level as possible, so, you know, we can have some continuity over the years. But, you know, I won't get into individual projects at this point, I'll let you all drive the conversation. But it's, you know, a lot of exciting projects in here, and we're excited to see what we can do in this next year, and to keep chipping away at it all, so.
Great, thank you. All right, Keith, take us through it.
Okay, I've got to get my screen up here, and then we'll be good to go. So this is a quick snapshot of the debt service that is connected with the CIP. The blue line represents the existing debt service that the city has without any CIP added. So that's the debt service as of FY '21. The orange line represents with CIP added. So that's all of the CIP that's in your packet that's proposed to be funded from bond, that's included in this, this orange line. The gray line represents the maximum debt service per our financial policies. As, as you all know, we, we have a financial policy that says our debt service shouldn't exceed 10% of our annual expenditures. So the red line is a trend line that's connected to the maximum debt service. So you can see that the debt service with CIP closely follows the maximum debt service trend line. So keep in mind that the CIP is a plan, and it's not expected, just as Julia just pointed out, that our final budgets will fund each and every item listed. Also, note that after the fifth year, so this is the amount that our existing debt service falls off, so you can see in 2027, after we reached the end of this five-year period, we have a $476,000 drop. And then, and the year following, we have another $819,000 drop for a total of $1.3 million. It's scheduled to drop off at that time, so that's going to create some additional room for more items at the end of that five-year period.
And that's assuming that we follow the, the current projection.
Well, yeah, we did everything that's in that plan as, as it's set forth.
You know, this is my, you know what, this is one of my favorite charts.
It's a roadmap, yes.
It's good, it, it, it's got a good trend. Although I am concerned, and Julia mentioned it, I am concerned this year. But we'll see as we get, as we get more into the process. Okay, good, it's a good start.
Yeah, okay. That's it for me, if there aren't any other questions.
Could we just give us, well, I have, I have a couple, but I'll let, Ms. Blake, do you have anything that you want to ask about the CIP?
No, I mean, it looks pretty solid. Questions?
Okay. Mrs. Gregory, any questions?
No, no questions.
Okay, I've got, I've got a few. Per our, per our policy, Keith, it says that the priorities are, the first priority is the items that are mandated by policy. Do we roughly have an idea what those are with the total?
I don't have that information offhand, as far as the priority items are included in the CIP.
Yeah, the ones that are, the ones that are mandated. Pardon?
We don't, I don't, I don't have that.
Can we get that easily?
We can quantify that and get it to you.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
I don't need it right now, I just think.
Yeah, I'd be happy to.
Yeah, that would be, that would be one of the things. The other thing that I have are minor questions. The $178,000 for the air handler in the government office building, is that a match with a, with a county?
I can speak to that. Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
I thought it was, but I just was checking, thank you. The transportation, can, can you give a quick overview on the 2.9 million there? Amanda?
Yes, yeah, I'd be happy to. So you saw a lot of new items in transportation this year. This is the first time since we've adopted the Vision Zero Action Plan, so you're seeing our wishlist of things that we would like to do to fully implement that plan. But you also have in there our typical street repaving and concrete work, and we did include the detail sheets on what streets would be included each year. We also moved the Rail Trail to the Transportation Section for the first time, and called that out as a separate project, as well as moved the Bicycle Master Plan implementation into transportation. Bicycle Master Plan was previously in general projects, and Rail Trail was lumped in with Bicycle Master Plan. So we've made those two unique projects and moved them under the umbrella of transportation. But, so it's Vision Zero, as you can tell, there's a lot of different initiatives of varying expenses, so we know we want to chip away at it, and we have, you know, our goals of how we want to accomplish this, so there are some lesser expensive things that hopefully we can at least tackle in year one, and then some longer-term and, and ongoing things that we know will take multi-years to accomplish.
Great, thank you, I, I thought that was the, the vision was the, one of the drivers, but I wasn't sure. And I didn't, I didn't realize that the bicycle was going to be moved over, so. Next, next one, I'm glad Cory's on here. Water production, 3.4 million, just about. Just a rough summation of where is it? Delivery, is it? What is it, roughly?
Um, well, it's a little bit of delivery, a little bit of maintenance. It's continuation of the well rehab. It's some cleaning of some water towers, painting of a water tower. You know, some are becoming an eyesore, and so they need some cleaning up. And then I think the, the largest project we have in there is the replacement of the filters at the Paleo Water Treatment Plant, they are, you know, pushing 40 years old, they have a 30-year lifespan. That is starting to, you know, come in, and so that, that, that's the big one, that's the big $3 million project right there.
Great, okay, that answers the question. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, and the last one is treat wastewater, is that treatment, or is that those, the things that we were talking about for the stormwater? Outtakes, does anybody know?
That.
You can get back to me if you don't have.
Treat wastewater.
That, that's Cory's section for wastewater.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've got, that's some plant things, we've got replacing a pump, we've got some pump stationary improvements in the distribution system for the lift stations. We've got that coming in, we've got the re, the internal recycle pump replacements, we've got a structural study going on where we've got a lot of buildings over there with cracks in them, and we've got electrical boxes exposed, and we're getting rainwater on them, so we've got to get those things fixed. So we've got several, several projects there on the wastewater side, so some of them are at the plant, some are at the lift station. I believe there's one on the outfall going into the river there, so there's several projects along those lines.
That answers the question, thank you, Cory, appreciate it. That's my questions, I think it's put together like it always is, very well done. And with all the detail, it certainly helps us. The one that helps me the most, actually, but one of the ones that helps me the most is the one about the streets with the the sequencing that we decided on, I don't know how many years ago that was, where we, we have them numbered from five being get it done to two, which is not the highest priority, so I think that that is, and that's proven to be very positive. And I agree with some of those, because my car has felt some of the holes that were in the middle of the street. Hopefully, the winter will be, won't be too bad, and we'll, we'll get through it much easier. That's what we need, we need a couple of winters where we don't have any throttle generation. Okay, thank you for that, thanks, thanks, Keith. Thank you, Amanda, Cory, appreciate it very much. Next, this is a good one, a discussion of a special exemption program for non-conforming use properties. Ron, we got your information, thank you for supplying that to us early. And if you want to go through with us quickly, that'd be great.
Okay, let me get it up on the screen here.
Okay.
Okay, so we were trying to identify some opportunities within the city where we have vacant properties and a way to kind of expedite the process without, you know, having to go through demolition or find a good route for rehabilitation. One of the ways that we came up with this was through a special exemption program, as it specifically relates to non-conforming use properties. In this slide, in this slide, I'm losing it, sorry, give me one second. So on the slide here, basically talks about our zoning code 17.16.040, and it lists, you know, all the requirements for non-conforming use property, so when the zoning change was made, any property that existed prior to that, that did not meet the requirements of the new zoning, zoning layout essentially could keep its non-conforming use, in this case, we're talking about multi-unit rentals, as long as they remain in place, and so it specifically relates to D of this section. It basically states that no building structure a lot where non-conforming use has substantially ceased for a continuous period of one year, whether fixed, whether or not fixtures or equipment are, are removed shall remain a non-conforming use property. So, right now, there's approximately 15 to 17 properties that this would apply to throughout the city. And, you know, basically, our objectives would be to see an increase in property value, tax revenue, neighborhood stability, housing and program revenue for HCDD. And obviously, there's plenty of studies out there that show vacant homes or vacant lots increased calls for service for crime and vandalism, cause blight in community, obviously, the vacant properties, and then the city absorb maintenance costs when they're not being maintained by the owner. So what we've, what we've seen, or what we've come up with through this process is, you know, people have bought these properties, assuming that they could be used as, as multi-unit properties, whether or not they were, that information came from the realtor, I can't say, but a lot of what I hear is that. And they get to the point where they're ready to move forward, and they find out we've lost our non-conforming use, and it costs more money than what it's worth to change the property from what was a duplex or a four or five unit to a three unit, and they basically abandoned the work that they've completed. So one of the things that we, we wanted to do is make sure that these properties, when they are rehabilitated, meet the standards of the community. And so we come up with a program eligibility requirements. Obviously, that property would have had to been vacant for one year or more. We added the piece in that if there was a property that had lost its non-conforming use within the last five years or 60 months, that they could also apply. It must be submitted within 12 months following the program approval by council. So council would have the option to renew this program if it was something we were successful with after that 12-month period. And then there would be some requirements for the property owner, and, you know, good standing is defined, obviously, is no delinquent taxes on the property, no outstanding code violations, no condemned properties without approved rehabilitation plan, so, you know, you do have condemned properties, but there are people that have submitted the rehab plans, we wouldn't want that to count against them. And then last would be evidence-based commitment to the timely completion of previous and current rehabilitation projects. We want to make sure that if somebody takes on a project that it gets completed in a timely fashion. And, and we want to make sure that they've shown a commitment to the city of Salisbury, because ultimately, we're trying to improve these neighborhoods. So the program application process would, obviously, would be an application process submitted to the city, to the Housing Community Development Department with a rehabilitation plan for review by Housing and Community Development, as well as the Infrastructure and Development Departments on the permitting side, and any approvals, you know, to any, you know, any structural design. One of the things that I thought about, which I think would be important, are some type of architectural renderings for the exterior and interior of the property. What we're trying to do here is not have these properties meet the minimum livability standards. You know, we want these, these properties to be a long-term investment with quality rental opportunities for the individuals in the city. So we then would have the historical and current proof of property reinvestment, so they would have to show that they have the adequate funding to complete the project, and then also show other projects that they've done within the city that were completed. One of the big things that we thought about during the process is how will this affect people that live around these properties? We've talked about the positives. Not having that vacant house next to you, crime's going to decrease, vandalism's going to decrease, and it's just going to make the neighborhood livability even better. But one of the big things thinking about from a standpoint of a homeowner next to one of these properties is, is parking space, and how that would affect on-street parking, so as a requirement of the program, for each unit, there would need to be one onsite or offsite, and thinking of, you know, the area downtown, they could buy a pass at the garage or something for the tenant. Include that in the rent, however they chose to do it, but for if it's three units, they'd have to have a minimum of three offsite or a parking lot provided spaces. The proposed rental rate would have to be that similar to the area in which the property stands. That would take some work on our end to determine that, but it is information that we could garner. And we could also look at the current market rates, and then obviously, with legislation being proposed at the state level, we would want these properties to adhere to federal, state, local fair housing guidelines and practices, so they would have the property available to everyone. So throughout this, this, this slide, you'll see these houses, and these are just a few of the identified properties that we have been able to come up with in the city. And then lastly, the terms of the program, which I think is probably the most important part, and will hold, hold people accountable, is they must be completed and available for rent within 12 months, so it limits the amount of time they have to complete the rehabilitation project, so this isn't something that's ongoing for a period of time. We talk about applicable permits required for rehabilitation, that would go through our permitting department, permitting department. And then also, in conversation, you know, it's been, if we do this, we would probably, we would want to require, and this is still up for discussion, and this is a proposal, this is an idea, but we requiring a sprinkler system in these properties for life safety as the project moves along, whether it be a bladder system, or, you know, something that would meet that, that, that requirement. The probation period would last for three years, so each year, each, each unit would be subject to inspection. They would have to maintain minimal codes, or maintain code and standards of livability requirements. There would be, there would be limits on the amount of violations that the property could have, three per year for code violations, and then also maintaining minimal calls for service from the police department, three per year at the max. I didn't include the fire in that, because, you know, I, I don't think that we could control if there's an emergency, a medical emergency or something like that, so that's why we just included the police department there. Also, probational period for landlord licensing will cost more, because it's going to require more oversight from our department. And it's also, you know, it's, it's somewhat of a bonus to the individuals or, or property owners. And with the extra, the extra time we require from our department and other departments, that fee would increase to 240 per landlord license per year, and the rental unit would be 240 per rental unit, which is 120 is the average for there, so it's actually double. So after the period is successfully completed, that licensing fee would, would return to whatever was approved at the current time by city council. The other piece that's not included in here would be that the application process itself is a $500 application fee for the property. And then obviously, if a property cannot be vacant for 12 months following the completion of the rehab plan, if the property violates that stipulation, it'll result in a loss of non-conforming use, and, and we're returned to status per Salisbury zoning code. And again, so this, this is something that, you know, we're looking at from HCDD as a way to, you know, return these properties to glory, give more housing, more opportunities for individuals in the city. Right now, it's, it's in its planning stages, and we were hoping to present this today to council, and just get some feedback on, on your thoughts around moving forward with it.
Thank you, Ron. Questions from, from the council members? Angela?
One of the things in there, it says it's, it's subject to inspections, is that, does subject mean actual inspection, like, they could be inspected, they may not be inspected, is there?
So every, with this particular, with this particular program, it would require that each unit is inspected on a yearly basis for that three-year period.
Okay. Um, have, have you, have you discussed any of this with any of the landlords?
No.
Okay.
No, so there's, there's, you know, I know off the top of head, Dan and I spoke about it today, that we know of at least five or six properties right now that are, that are sitting vacant for this exact reason. And it's just a way to kind of look at, you know, moving that forward.
Mm-hmm. All right, um, that's all I have right now, I think in theory, it's a really good idea, I just think some applications of it, or the, the logistics of it, keeping track of it is really going to be interesting, and keeping people accountable.
Yeah, the, the one thing that's, I think is good about, about the program is the number of properties that it can apply to, isn't this exponential? Yeah, the, the, the one thing that's, I think is good about, about the program is the number of properties that it can apply to isn't this exponential number. You know, we're, with, without understanding five years back of properties that, that it would apply to. We know for sure of fifteen and possibly seventeen properties. And we would put all plans in place from a H C D D standpoint to make sure that we're following up on our end with our, with our code inspectors, inspectors.
Would any of the properties be qualified for Habitat for Humanity, for them to buy, purchase and rehab?
They could apply and Habitat is specifically, they, they're rebuilding houses for. Single family that I'm aware of right now. They don't do any purchase and rental. But I mean, I don't see any reason why they, you know, they couldn't, but I don't know what their guidelines stipulate.
I see. Okay. Well, that's all I have at this time. Thank, it was a good presentation.
Thanks Angela. Michelle, any, any questions or comments?
Um, it's sort of covered, but. And so this is just for properties that are meant to be rentals, basically.
So these are properties that at one point in time were non-conforming use properties. That if the zoning code changed in eighty-three, for instance. That, you know, at that point in time would have went R five or R eight. And that code does not allow that, those properties in that zoning area. To have this type of use. They should be single-family homes. And, and if a property is damaged or it's vacant for a period of one year. That property will lose its non-conforming use and that has to return to a single family. And a lot of times, and this is out of the control of our department or D I D's department, is sometimes realtors. Market these as multi-unit properties and then the buyer comes in and makes the purchase. And you have a situation where they thought they were getting something and they got the complete opposite. So now they have to pay. If they were going to do it as a rental, because that's what some of them buy it as, now it can only be a single-family home and it's not worth fixing up for them for their investment.
Right, so, and so you're saying like.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, so like she was mentioning like Habitat for Humanity. What if, what if an organization similar to Habitat for Humanity were to come in and, and. Take one, take one of these properties, they would be able to apply for it, just like a regular landlord.
I think that'll be the unique thing to see if, if we were to move forward with a project like this. You know, it, I believe that some of these properties will go up for sale. And I do believe that the right investors will come in or, or groups can come in and make that type of thing happen. Yes, I do believe. That's something we would see. Some of these properties will hit the market or you would see a quick turnaround on, on what they look like now compared to what they look like in twelve months.
That's really interesting and I like that idea. Okay, cool. Thank you.
I, I have a couple of thoughts. First of all, I think that the program is excellent. Because it really attacks three, three things we've been talking about for a long time. One of them is nope, not availability of rental properties that are in good shape. The blight in the community and the lack of housing that we have for low income. And those would be targeted groups that, that would be served by this. So I think the program is excellent because you're right. That one house, I believe it was on there, is a six-unit house, six, either six or eight unit house. And to convert that to a one family. Forget it. It's just going to sit there and rot and then cause all the neighbors and the things that you referred to. So that's a, you know, in a sense, that's another positive. Couple of questions that came up, just as you were describing it and I'm, I'm thinking about it, that I think we need to look at. Like the parking, I agree with a hundred percent. But that might require us to gave, give some modification to setbacks and things. Down the road, just as a thought. And I, I'm dig, I know I'm in the weeds a little bit, but I think that those are the kinds of things we have to button up. Before we, we actually bring this forward. And the other thing is. Experience, my experience in Salisbury is any costs that are incurred by the landlords. Are passed on to the client, to the renters. And I think that if we want to accomplish our goal, we have to be very careful. With like doubling the fee. And that's open for judgment. I'm just throwing it out because that, this is my first opportunity to, to go over it. But I think this requires a little more discussion. I think that we, we have now, since we have the, the presentation, I'd like to see this again. On the next work session. So that if we have any follow-up questions or concerns, and then I'd like to have. Mere, Boda and April. On, with us on this discussion. I think this is a very important one. So if we could put that on, Mrs. Nichols, that would be great. So Ron, thank you very much for the work. I think you're right on. And I think it's a question of how do we implement? And, and hopefully we can iron these things out. And maybe make, let it move forward next, the next work session. That would be my goal if we can get everything ironed out. Because the sooner the better in my mind. And just to confirm, we had consensus, I believe we have consensus, but I want to make sure officially. On the legislation on the funds for the business relief program. This is Blake. We have consensus?
Yes.
To move forward?
Yes, please move it forward.
And Mrs. Gregory?
Yes, move it forward.
This is great. Yeah, okay, good. We have consensus then to move that forward. And we'll have further discussions obviously on the, the C I. Okay, I think that. Administration, Julia, you have any, anything for the good of the order?
Thank you, council, for, for the feedback for, for tonight. Thanks to Ron and the team and Amanda. I know they've been working together on, on that topic. And I would just add that today is February first, first day of Black History Month and Amber is on with us. I do want to give her a shout out and Angela. We have been working collaboratively to roll out a really. Really cool and dynamic Black History Month program that focuses on a lot of different topic areas. It's all on our website. Becca Brown has built it out and it's absolutely gorgeous. And Amber and Angela have, have been, have identified, I think, five students that are going to be taking us through the month. And their journey as they learn more about the five faces on the mural at Church Street. And there was a little soundbite that went up today that was really, really fun to listen to as they are all processing. You know, what it means for Black History Month. So I invite you all to check out that website. There's opportunities for you to, to learn yourself, the community, to, you know, spend your dollars in certain places. And to, you know, just do more and learn more. So thank you to everybody involved.
Thank you, Julia. Anybody, any comments for the good of the order from, we have several people left. Who are department heads and. Anybody who would like to speak, please identify yourself to Julia and we'll, we'll take some comments. Nobody. Matt Drew, nothing from you.
All good here. Thank you, Mr. Council President.
Thanks, Matt. Mary? I see Mary's there. Mary? Shanti? I see Mr. Boda's just joined us. Mr. Boda? He's not on yet, I guess. He's muted. He was at work today, so we, we had to forgive him. Amber, any, any thing that you'd like to say?
Oh, of course. Why don't I? I actually just wanted to. Appreciate everyone with the information that was shared today, but also let you guys know that we are Chipmunks Culture Center and community members. Are getting ready to plan Juneteenth Festival for twenty twenty-one. So please look for a proclamations request pretty soon. We would really like that. Because this Black History Month is, should not be limited just to these twenty-eight days. It's something that we should celebrate for the entire year. And so Juneteenth is our Black Independence Day. And so we're hoping to bring that back to the community because we were, we shut down the, last year because of COVID. And so we're hoping to do that again. And so we're excited for that, so.
Thank you, Amber. Thank you. Chief, either chief, Chief Duncan, Chief Toll?
Good afternoon, council. Thank you so much for the support on the C I P. Very much appreciate it.
You're very welcome. Are you parked, I hope?
I am. I am parked. Of course I am.
Just checking, just checking.
Check anytime, but yeah, you knew I would be.
Thank you. Thank you, chief. Take care. Chief Toll?
Good evening. Yes, by all means, thank you for your consideration with the C I P projects. I could probably talk for a while about our C I P projects and the importance of them, but I will not bore you tonight with that. I'm sure we will have further conversations come budget time.
Yes, you and Jimmy can bore us later.
It's, it certainly isn't a bore. It's just the, the priorities of our department. And I. I look forward to the conversations about this non-conforming use. Because it does have an impact when it comes to the fire service and life safety. It's the seriousness of the codes and revisions to codes in regards to sprinkler systems. You know how important they are. So I, I look forward to having some more conversations in reference to this subject. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you, chief. Deputy Chief Gladwell? Anything?
Proud to serve.
Thank you, Jimmy. All right, for the good of the order, Ms. Blake?
Um, just, there's a lot of great things going on in Salisbury. There's posting and everything going on every, every day. Just see what Salisbury's doing. Again, if you're healthy enough, please, please donate blood.
Thank you, Angela. Michelle?
Just want to say, you know, our, our county rates are going down, but it doesn't mean that, that it's safe to, to go without a mask. In fact, a lot, a lot of folks are recommending that you wear two masks. You know, this, there's new strains out. I haven't heard of any hitting Maryland yet, but it doesn't hurt to be cautious. You know, these, these new strains are incredibly contagious. So, you know, please be careful, please wear a mask and stay home if you can.
Thank you, Michelle. Mere, are you there yet? I guess not.
Yeah, Jack, he's driving.
He's driving. Oh, okay. He's listening. Good boy. He's all right. Okay. I too want to remind everybody to wear a mask. We're getting there. I'm actually going to have my second shot on Friday and I will update everybody as to how that went. I hope it's like the first one because I didn't even realize I got one. So we got to get through this and we got to get through it together. It's not going to be, it's not going to be one or two of us that, that make it happen. It's all of us. So thank you very much for everybody for your input today. Hope you have a, a good week and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.